Okay, are we live? Okay, I'll go ahead and call the city council meeting in August 18, 2020 to order and welcome everybody. We have, as we speak, a bare minimum of a call. As I say sometimes in county meetings, we have quality if we do not have quantity. So I have with me in the council meeting room Christie Cantrell and Tony Lee. Katie Smith has joined us remotely and then I'm here, so we have four people. We are following the governor's orders. We are socially distancing. There are three other people in the room and they are socially distanced as well. So we will proceed with our business tonight. We're hopeful that we'll have one more council member join us, perhaps another remotely, but we'll go ahead and get started. And we'll go ahead for about a minute, we'll have work right here. It's on? Yeah, okay. All right, y'all, whatever. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and the many blessings of life you give us. We're thankful for oxygen you gather here tonight. We're mindful that we have had a very serious accident here in this community. As you know, we pray that you'll be with those involved and those families that perhaps are worried about their loved ones. We pray that you'll be with them. We pray that you'll be with the emergency providers that are responding and have responded. We pray that you'll be with the Life Flight folks as they travel to their destination with these folks. We pray to continue to bless this community and its people. We pray that you or ask that you'll keep us safe from harm and from this disease. We know that there are those in our community that have had it and we pray that no one else will. Or we ask that you guide us tonight, help us to do right and forgive us all your sins. All right, thank you all. And we've got minutes from last time, July 14. So this is, as the year falls, some months will go five weeks between meetings. Next month it'll be four weeks, we're back on September 15. So have y'all had a chance to look at the minutes, everybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, is the motion by Tony Lee to approve?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Christie. Let me ask, Katie, are you hearing when they make those motions or do I need to repeat them? Oh, I'm not hearing you. What's happening, Grant? Hang on. She's talking.
Is my ear audio muted?
Uh.
We're not muted, she is.
We're not muted. Are you muted?
I was, but supposedly if I press spacebar, it's a flip. You mean that we don't have to mind?
Question mark.
Hold on, can you hear me now?
I can't. And what I had asked was, when Tony made the motion and Christie said, "You don't hear that?" All right, then I'll repeat as we go. Okay, anybody's comments? We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any comments from anybody? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Katie votes aye, and so we have the minutes have passed. Of course, we have nobody here from the public tonight and I regret that. I meant to say a while ago, I am waiting, as everybody else is, to hear from the governor. The order is set to expire on August 29. The mayor told me last night after our county commission meeting and I asked him, had he heard anything? He said they had had a meeting with the governor, but the governor had not tipped his hand. He just said he was still considering what he was gonna do. So hopefully one day we'll all be able to welcome folks back into our meeting room. But let me ask, does anybody have any business from the public that you need to bring forward?
There's just a question, is there any anticipation to opening the schools 100%?
Are there any anticipation to opening the schools 100%?
That's a question.
Well, that's not a council issue, but I will say that from the meetings I've been in, the goal has been that they are going to stay with the hybrid through the October fall break with the hopes of going back to school, regular school, let's call it, after that. So that's all I know. I've not heard anything different today, other than we've had two good opening days. I have received information from Dr. Ryan on that, and we've had two good opening days. Also aware that students are around us very closely that have had COVID cases today. Does anything else, Grant, from the public? Okay. We have our reports. Yes, I'm sorry, Katie. You're gone again. I can't hear you. No. You're doing that Verizon number on it? Can you hear me now? No, I can't hear you. I see you speaking, I don't hear you. Grant?
Oh, Grant.
I'm glad you're here, buddy.
Once again, it's on her side, no nervous.
Okay, he's saying it's on your side. Whoa.
I barely hear, but I can see it.
Yeah, we're just very faintly, I can't understand.
Our system turned up all the way, it's something on her, can you hear?
All right, we got ahead of you, sir. I can't read lips, I'm sorry. Keep trying to plug into this place. We, we, just very faintly, I can't understand what you're saying, but I know it's your voice, that's all I can say. Yeah. You're stronger now, whatever you hear. You what? Yeah, we can now, but not as loud as we were at the start, but we can hear you now.
Are we gonna talk about hearing elbows?
Yes, yes.
Okay, does he give I have to public that I would mention?
Okay, yes, I've got all that stuff. I've got more information from you today. You may have as well, I know it's where you copy, nine pieces, so. Yes, we will get to that somehow. Yeah, that's on the, somehow listed in the, whatever all this stuff is we do. Did everybody get a copy of the fire report? For those members of the public, I'll go over it real quickly. There is some very good news in there. Grant, how many people do we have watching?
Active, we have ten.
Oh, that's great. Okay, the fire department report that's provided to us by Chief Lakeon. We had forty-nine calls during the month of July, of which forty-six were paged by 911 and three by WEMO. We have, this is the good news, Water Town has been notified that we've been awarded an assistance to firefighters grant. The grant is for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, excuse me, ten dollars. The federal part of that, which is the grant, is a hundred and twenty-two thousand eight sixty-six, sixty-seven. The city will be responsible for six thousand one forty-three thirty-three, which is a, not many of us wouldn't spend six thousand of our own money to get a hundred and twenty-two back. They are conducting a demo of two different SCBA packs for what this will do. It will allow the department to purchase eighteen new self-contained breathing apparatus, thirty-six air bottles, and twenty-five masks for our department, and that's the major masks. That's not the ones that we're wearing for COVID. So that's good news. I'm sure he'll be to us when he's ready for us to appropriate that money. So we'll be glad to do that. Next tonight would have been the police report. Our police have been very involved the last two hours on that. But the police report looks to be fairly, if there is such a thing as normal, it does look to be fairly normal as far as mileage and calls and that type of thing, nothing that really jumps out at me unless y'all say something that you want to comment on or ask about. And then finally is the sewer report that comes from Dale Smith. That, he talks about our inflight composite sanitary units not functioning after thunderstorms. He scheduled electricity to die, that's the problem, they're supposed to come this week. We also had an overflow on the square in front of Technical Plating Parking Lot. Due to partial blockage of the line, Bob Morgan got there quick and jetted it out and the blockage was cleared. We have, I put it in my article the other day, that we have been notified by the state that our sewer plan is acceptable and it has consent, the state revolving long loan fund, hopefully for funding. So we are waiting here in that. When we know our funding's in place, we'll bid the project. Since we know consent bidding it, nobody's gonna bid on it, they don't know the money's there either. So we've had some good news on the, on the money front, so people will be pleased with that. Any, yes?
While we're talking about sewer, where are we on those cards that we're gonna mail to sewer users?
I don't know the answer to that. I haven't talked to Dale about it, so I don't know the answer to that.
No, 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 it wasn't Dale doing it. Remember, I talked to Colette and Michael and I sent the information over to the woman at City Hall and they said, "Maybe April, we're gonna look into how we wanted to go about banning those cards about flush flights and that kind of stuff."
Yeah, that's not been done. That's not.
And maybe each, because we're paying a lot of money on the back end to fix problems that have been moved by that.
Okay, we'll see if we can't get that done. I'm looking at y'all, so y'all need to take care of that for me, okay?
And they hear you from there?
They, they can, yeah. They can't see you, they can't hear you.
They got my email?
April says she thanks me dear, yes.
It's been a couple months.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
No, I just, that's relevant to the issue we're talking about now.
Okay, Tony, Christie, anything? Okay. All right, we'll move on to old business and then I'll move on to new business. First on the list is the election commission resolution. We voted on it last time on first reading. There were a couple of questions asked and then I had one as well after I got to thinking about it. Katie, I think you asked a question, so I've got the answers here for you. Those folks who are on the list of owning property in Water Town but not residing here will be notified, if this passes tonight, will be notified that they're going to be required to vote this way. They will then be mailed. The second question I think you had asked was, will they have to request about or will it automatically be mailed? The response I got was that an application would be mailed to them no less than forty-five days before the election. It will be specifically just for the Water Town Municipal Election. If they wish to participate that way, they have to return their application only before the seventh day before the election. And then we will process their request and send the ballot. The ballot has to be received no later than 7:00 PM on election day. Now, the question I had, that I asked this morning, I thought we had a fairly lengthy discussion, and I may have already answered it, but I'll say it again. If you choose to vote that way, you will vote for the Water Town Municipal Election only. It does not stop you to go on to the polling place or any one of the eighteen voting centers to vote for the other races for president and representative in the senate and all of that. So, but this will be the only thing, but if you do not request, the action be valid. You will not be allowed, you, your vote, you can't go to a polling place and ask about it. Paperwork will not be there, including this polling place. So did that answer the question you had last time?
My initial point was to decide whether I thought that changing the method of voting was gonna change the likelihood that someone would vote? And I don't think so. I think the level of challenge is similar, but you have to drag yourself down here to vote for it or you have to go through the trouble of requesting that. So if we were suddenly gonna have a lot of people who don't reside in their little property start voting, whereas they didn't before, it seems like an important issue, but I don't think they'd be pressured that it's gonna change a lot.
Okay, so it is, the other thing I talked to Philip Warren about, and that is my, one of my concerns is, is that we advertise this, Philip sends the notice out, all of this stuff gets done, but on the day after an election, somebody calls and says, "I wanted to vote, Mayor," and y'all changed the way we could vote. And so I asked Philip, I said, "Philip, if that happens, or if it happens for more than one person, I would probably recommend that for the next election, we go back to the old way." And he said that would be fine.
Honestly, I don't think that we would have to. I think that it gets changed and they have that problem this election, the next election, they know.
Well, they do, they do.
And so if it's better than the election provision, which it sounded like it was, that's why they wanted to go this way, then they're, they're announcing it to everyone. And if they miss it, I'm sorry, but they won't miss it again by now.
Well.
Do you still have a time?
Yes, I do. I just tried, let me just say this, I fielded a lot of complaints, so I try to keep them down minimum. But what I, I have no problem recommending this to you on the second reading. By the way, for the members of the public, we now have Kyle Roberts with us, so we have four council members and myself here, so we certainly have a call. And we could very well have another member join us remotely, depending on how the volleyball game comes out of this. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council on this resolution?
Second.
We have got a motion by Katie and a second by this Tony. Tony, any discussion on that? Okay, if no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, I'm signing it as we speak and I will get it to Philip tomorrow. Another item of old business. Let me talk to you about, I, I kept some brief about keeping the playgrounds clean. And I really caught some brief when they opened the schools, of course, and they said if they can go to school, they can play on the playground. And what I said was in response, in schools, there's constant cleaning going on. They've got the staff to do it, they're cleaning after classes, they're cleaning before, they're cleaning afterwards. But we don't have that in the city. I don't have anybody that stays in the playground and cleaned the playground after a kid uses it or whatever, that or whatever. So I am errant on the side of caution and I, I think it's the right thing to do. But there are some folks that are getting kicked pretty high. But I've stuck to that unless, unless y'all want to do something different, I think it's the safest thing to do right now. Yes, Katie?
I think you being opposed is the right thing, and even though it's hard, because it is definitely hard. I also wonder, I know that there's been some talk about government leaving, signing protective legislation for businesses and schools so there can't be lawsuits of liability. And I don't know that municipalities are covered, and I think that matters, right? So we're seeing this Kate Beckman, and somebody had said, "I don't really want that to be on our budget," honestly.
Well, I agree with that, and my understanding is he just signed the legislation this afternoon, so it just became law.
And does it protect municipalities?
I've not seen it, so I'm anxious to read it. I suspect that it does, but I do know that the protection was not going to be as strong as what he had wanted originally, so. I've lost Katie's picture. Is she still with us?
Yeah.
I am.
Okay, well, you're back. So I know that the legislation wasn't as strong as the governor wanted. I suspect it's strong enough to cover us, but I don't know that today. And that's probably something we'll revisit in September.
So while we're talking about this and COVID as a byproduct of this, I think we have other public events that are of serious concern related to COVID that I would like to talk about.
Okay.
And I'm talking about the trains and the mile-long rail sale.
And what, neither one of those are sponsored by the cities, the playground is owned by the cities.
No, but I think the city is seen as supporting the economy.
Well, I guess it depends on who's doing the singing, but I don't know that we have the authority to shut down a private business, the train, or an organization that wants to do an event here, Katie. I'm just not gonna, I'm not gonna leave for that. Now, there may be support to do that. I've already had a call saying surely y'all are gonna cancel Halloween. Halloween's not a city event, never has it. You know, Halloween, you can't stop somebody from letting kids come to their door and giving them candy. The city's got no place for that. We've got no place for telling a grandmother she can't give her grandchildren candy on Halloween. I'm not going there.
Nobody wants to tell a grandparent that.
Do what?
I'm, I'm just putting my thoughts together.
Sure.
Because I, we need to write that, but you're definitely right. Unless we trickle or quadruple this course, we can't prevent something that people are determined to. But I do think that we can talk about it being better for the community to wait.
That may be true, but we're talking about something right now that's seventy days away. You know, Nashville.
I'm talking about Halloween, I'm talking about the train on the fifth of September and at the mile-long rail sale.
Don't, well, don't you think that private industry will take care of that? If he doesn't sell enough tickets, and.
Honestly, I don't think that private industry would take care of that. And I think that whether it's one hundred, or four hundred, or five hundred people that come from a place that's having more trouble with COVID than we are, we've made a mistake. And I've had somebody say, you know, you don't have to participate in a mile-long rail sale, you can stay home. And that's true, but I'm not really worried about that. Like, I get that I just didn't, and I get that I can close my business and lose money where I could have been serving my community. But I'm more worried about the base rate of COVID increasing around our kids and our grandparents and our community members, around your mom and Jimbo and George and all of those folks, and the base rate of COVID is gonna go up. And I think that we could say, we understand that we can't forbid it. I don't know what goes to it, because clearly things have been forbidden in other places. But we wish, we, we think it would be best for the community, even though we know it's hard to wait until next year. That means events that would be horrible.
Well, I respectfully disagree. Everybody else on the roundtable, I'm sure, has got opinions on that, but first of all, Nashville today canceled their Christmas parade. I think that is, you know, that's four months off. Who knows what's gonna happen in four months? They've told people that people can't go to the Titans football game. If they're not gonna be able to attend the football game, how are they gonna let on a train in a cylinder that everybody's breathing the same air? How are they gonna let that happen? And that train, the Riddams in Nashville. So they may let that go on. They, you can't have a twenty-five in the bar, you can't have so many in the restaurant, but they're gonna let him sell four hundred or five hundred tickets? I don't think the marketplace will do it. And I wonder how the mayor of Nashville's gonna handle it.
Well, he's already sold, some of you said one hundred and ten.
Sold one hundred and ten, what I've heard, but I also heard he said he had to sell two hundred to break even. And that doesn't sound to me like he's gonna get there, because that's just three weeks away. But I don't know, I don't know, but I. I'm just going.
I talked to her and I told her that I've been involved in putting on these events for twenty years and writing, at Krantz, when we had the T A Jazz Festival, I've been working hard at this since long before I ever went to it. And I'm lonely. And I'm only be open, because experience is not standing, serving my community at that time, but I told him, as much as I value the Central Railway Museum and that would be successful, Mike, I lost you, and I see a mirror with a telephone, and I hear kids screaming. Can you be on it?
Yeah, I can hear you. I see a telephone on my screen.
That's what I had to say.
It's what? Oh, Randy's showing me, okay.
I, I just told him, as much as I value them and I want them to succeed, and I put my blood, sweat, and tears into these events and will continue to do so, I was not going to be open to this training, because I think it's wrong for our community. And I feel like there are people, not everybody, but there are people who are hoping you will say, "No, please let's not," and I can't hear it.
Well, Katie, I've not had a single person say that to me. Not a single person. And I'm not... I don't doubt you, I'm just telling you that the people I'm hearing from are mad at me about the park, about the, the playground and the basketball courts. That's what I'm hearing from. And the kids wanna play basketball, and loving to open their Jimmy Floyd Center to basketball, and I'm hearing that. But I checked with them yesterday, I was there, and you can't play team sports, you can only go in and shoot. You can't play one-on-one, you can't play as a team. So why would, you know, you know as well as I do, if I open this up and put the goals back up, they'll be over here choosing a plan. Heck, if I could, I'd play with it, you know, but, so we've got, I could, I, I'm ready to take the steps to necessary to protect what the city has charged me with doing. But I'm not gonna tell, for me, I'm not gonna tell people what they can do individually. I'm just not gonna do that. And I may be in the minority on that, but I think, you know, people have got to know how to protect themselves, and...
But we can't just protect ourselves. We can't yet, right? It's a big part of our goal. Our making wise choices protects people around us, which is a success.
Well, I hope we're making right choices, uh, but again, you chose to, to close your business, and I understand why, I chose what, but that's your decision. I can't come in and tell you to do it. And I'm not gonna try to check...
But that's what the Health Department guidelines say.
Do what?
That's what the Health Department guidelines say. Honestly, my problem is, if I take the kids out that I'm supposed to take out, I don't have enough staff to run the restaurant.
Sure.
Well...
And same way over here, that's the reason we closed the city hall. If somebody gets the COVID and I have to, we have to, uh, do three or four, uh, quarantine, the city shuts down. And I can't do that. I just can't. So that's why I'm so guarded about the playground and about the basketball courts, and if, but, but I'm, I'm not... Now, again, I've talked too much, so I'll, I'll throw it out to everybody on that. I'm not gonna vote. Uh, let me say this, I will encourage people, if they are concerned about that, not to participate and, and that type of thing, but I don't think that I've got the authority to tell people, "You can't do this." And I'll tell you, well, even if I've got the authority, I'm not gonna take it. I'm not.
I know.
I'm gonna go to football game Friday night. Now, there'll be a lot of people say you shouldn't do that, and I'm going to football game. I'm gonna sit six feet from somebody, and I'm gonna wear a mask. That's what they've asked us to do. And I'm not trying to make a political statement. I think if we'd have done some of the things that you did three months ago, we'd be talking about having college football and the stadiums being full, but we didn't do it.
So what can we do now?
Make the best...
So that in three months, we're not saying the same thing?
Well, we could be. We could very well be. But I'm not willing to jump out there and cancel events, or try to cancel events two months down the road. I, I just not. Everybody else join in, I'm tired of talking.
Well, I'm hearing people, and I've heard about the playground, why it'd be a bad thing, because I'm here every day. Uh, it's, they're wondering why we're closing the playground and the goals and letting these kids come over here and play football and, you know, crack.
I don't think we should...
And, uh, I don't, you know, I, I don't know what to tell them, the only thing I'd say, "Well, we don't have no control."
The governor's order.
Yeah.
He released the, the football to be held, but he did not basketball. And, you know, that's supposed to expire August twenty-ninth, so I'm waiting to see what, what he's gonna do there. Uh, you noticed today the NCAA's talking about setting a date about whether or not they're gonna have a basketball season. So, but, but that's, and, you know, I was told the other day, Mount G never closed their playgrounds, but...
I've heard that also.
Yeah.
And I, and some of, all of London's not closed. You know, there are some of them are going into youth.
Yeah.
And then once, when the, when we asked, when I, they, they come up and ask, "Why is our playground proposed?" Said, "We see kids over playing." And I said, "You know, we can't control those kids."
I'm, I'm going myself by the governor's orders, that's all I'm doing. If y'all wanna open the playground...
I mean, we gotta open it, the governor's...
No.
I don't see what we have control.
There's stuff coming in here.
Okay, Hal was saying he was getting a lot of questions, Katie, about the playground, and he said people were asking, "Why are they playing football, but they can't do the playground and the other stuff?" And the answer, you've probably heard the...
Right, I, I can hear you, I just can't hear Hal.
That's what Hal was saying. He said he's been asked several questions about the playground and the basketball courts. Others? Okay. Are we, are we ready to move on? Okay. Industrial Park, y'all got a, no, this is a different thing, I'll come back, I got that in a minute. Industrial Park, the paving, the road commission has told me, the, the folks at the drive-in asked that we not begin it until after their concert on September third. I talked to the road commission, they were fine with that, they probably weren't gonna get to it anyway. They think they'll be able to do it on a Friday and a Saturday, and they'll give us notice of when it's gonna be. Um, you have a budget amendment there that we approved on first reading last time. This one is moving the money out of, off of one of our certificates of deposit to cover what we have paid Water Management Services. Otherwise, our budget looks like we ran a deficit when we did not. This was a capital expenditure. So I'm asking you to approve that on second reading, if you would.
I'm trying...
Got a motion from Tony, a second of mine. Katie?
I'm trying to find the appropriate document, but, uh, fine.
Okay, it's, there's, there's two budget amendments, and one of them is about a half a page, that's the one I'm on, and the other one's gonna be four pages long.
Yeah, I have a comment on the other one.
On this one, or the second?
The second.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second on this one, uh, having to do with, uh, the money we spent last year with the engineer, uh, preparing bid documents, not doc, bid documents, we're doing a surveying, and all the stuff ready that goes with it, there's certainly a lot more. Uh, are you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. The other thing I, uh, the other item of old business...
I'm just gonna check to make sure you guys can hear me.
Yes, I hear you.
I can hear you.
Katie, do you hear it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we got you, Brandy. You're showing up as a white telephone with a green background, but we've got you.
Okay, perfect. We just won a volleyball game, so I had you in my ear the whole time we were playing, and now you got me here too, so.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm glad you won. Did we spank them pretty good?
Absolutely.
Good. We headed to the state tournament again?
Absolutely.
Ah, love it. All right. Okay, um, the, y'all probably got an email, I think, last week from the folks at Technical Plating, still interested in talking about the industrial park, and I am too. I have just not had an opportunity, and I have spent, and, a lot of time the last few weeks on masks and getting schools open, and what we can do and what we can't do. So there's a limit as to how much I've been able to do, and that one is one that had to be set aside, but I did respond to them and tell them that I was still very much interested, and will be talking to them about it when we get, when I get a chance. Um, okay, let's go to some items of new business. Um, this other budget amendment is one that I sent out yesterday, uh, and it is on the end-of-the-year budget amendment to bring light items into place where sometimes we have not spent as much on some light items, and some of them have been overspent. Budgeting is not an exact science, and so this is not unusual. Um, so I'll ask you to approve this tonight on first reading. I said, I keep saying four pages, it's actually three pages.
Mike?
Yes, Katie?
On the last page...
Yes.
Uh, under the "Be it further enacted, that first from Health Insurance to Repair and Maintenance Sewer."
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you've got too many zeros.
Well, I do, don't I? That's big money there, isn't it? Yeah.
Big money.
Yeah, we'll change that. I didn't catch that. Okay. Other questions or comments?
Are there any signs here for the budget for next year that, that we need to pay attention to?
Not that I know of at this point in time, Katie. The county mayor and I were talking this morning, and his, it's his belief, and I, and I share it, that the significant part of this year's budget year for us is going to be in January and February to see if the property taxes come in like they're scheduled. Right now, sales tax is holding its own. If the property taxes stay in the ballpark, we should be good. If the property taxes dip, then hopefully we've got that money that the govern, government legislature has appropriated that will pick up some of that, but it would be very nice for our tax base to hold steady so that we could use the other money for something else. I think that's what we've gotta watch, because that's the single biggest revenue item in the general fund.
Sure. Uh, did, did we not play baseball? We have a lot of money, well, for the item, from baseball umpires to move, and then football referees, do we need to budget more for that, or does that change year to year and we can't anticipate it?
It changes, it changes year to year. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. It, it changes year to year because it depends on whether or not they get a playoff game or a championship game here. They get three home games every year, and I can calculate that, but it's the extras. And I, I think Jeff Tunks told me this time, they're not anticipating either one, but if they get that, it'd be good, because they'll, they'll take in more than enough money to pay for the increase. Uh, on the baseball umpires, of course, we didn't have a baseball season, so we had some money sitting in that light item. Uh, other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
No, sir.
Okay, I got a motion from Katie, it's a second over here, second from Hal Roberts, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brandy, are you still with us?
Gotcha.
You, was that an aye?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you. Uh, okay, let's talk about the, the Elwell contract. Um, sent some stuff out to you about that, got some more stuff in today from Mr. Elwell. He is asking for, um, the right to go into the city hall and set up some type of box, and I'm not sure what it is, and if I knew what it was called, I still couldn't tell you how it works, but it's a part of the system he's setting up. He tells me that he, and I hope he's watching tonight, he tells me that he will not have to go in there on a daily basis or anything like that. Nothing else has to be done inside there. Then what we talked about was he needs our antenna on the square to, for it to be a part of his antenna network, for lack of a better term. Uh, my concern when he and I talked was the safety of the, um, antenna, the tower, and so I asked him to have John Jewell look at that, because John's been more familiar with that than anybody around, and John did so and told him that it was structurally sound and could be used for what he needs. Today, he has come back and he has found another higher spot in addition to the, to the antenna, but he wants to put a, a, an antenna on the water, uh, tank up here, and he tells me that there is already a, um, amateur radio antenna up there. I suspect probably John knows something about that. So, uh, you think? Um, so he's asked for that. Now, some concerns I had, and I, frankly, they've been alleviated to my satisfaction. I asked about, um, whether or not our insurance would, you know, this would not jeopardize our liability insurance. Bill Dodson told me this morning it would not. Um, he asked that we get proof of insurance from the Elwell Corporation, and he asked that we get a whole harmless agreement from him, uh, from them. I think that's wise move. The other thing that I don't know that we've come to an agreement on, and that is, I told Mr. Elwell, um, that we have a history here of when we allow people to use the city, uh, equipment or, um, real estate, buildings, whatever, for a money-making project, they have to pay us something. In other words, the taxpayer shouldn't be underwriting a private business. And he, he indicated he was okay with that and, and talking about that. We haven't talked about a specific or anything like that yet.
There's a comment from, and I'm gonna mispronounce this gentleman's last name, Dylan, Ryan, or something.
Okay, I think he's, I think he's Mr. Elwell's partner.
And he said the box inside city hall will include a desktop computer to be used as a router, a battery backup, and a rack for those items. I don't know what that, what that has to do with the topic at hand, but...
Now, that's, that's what they're talking about using the city hall for. Katie, uh, I think it is, uh, Mr. Elwell's partner said that what they would have up there, what, tell me again, Grant, it was a computer? Desktop computer?
To be used as a router, a battery backup, and a rack.
A router to be used as a router and a battery backup.
But there's no electricity on in there, right?
Hmm, no, there's not, is there? That something will have to be addressed, and I don't know if he's got a battery pack or something he's gonna write up.
But the battery...
Okay. He said the battery backup was for if the power went out, so we'll have to talk about...
But there's no power in there.
Yes, Katie, I said that. There is no...
I know, so...
But what I'm trying to figure... Go ahead.
Battery backups are for when there's a short-term power outage, so that your computer can hold on until the power comes back.
So we will have to have the power on up there. Um...
Now, there's the power outside, those, uh, posts that we put in for use for festivals, remember what I'm talking about?
Yes, there's one on that pole right to the right of the city hall, as you face it, I think.
That's on the left, I think, in the alley toward Ruby Side.
Okay, all right, okay.
But I don't know if those stay hot, or if they're turned off for safety when they're not in use for an event.
I don't know.
But they're potentially more cost if we have to put electricity to the building.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have, uh, we're gonna have to have some type of financial remuneration. I told him that we weren't looking to make money off his business, but we weren't looking to lose money either. I think during this time of COVID nineteen, their idea to help make access to the internet available to people in the area where it may not be is a great idea, and I think that we would be wise, and I'm speaking for me again, that we would be wise to participate in that. Um, having said that, uh, and I have no problem with it going on the tank, if it can be done, you know, safely, but he is wanting to move forward, so, uh, I don't know exactly, since we don't know about the power or, or, or whatever. Is, is Derek back on, by any chance, Grant?
There's no, no further comments, no. I'm asking.
Um, I know that...
Did we vote to...
Go ahead.
Could we vote to approve the proposal assuming and that, that we can solve? That we can get the hold harmless, which is one of the things I had on my list. We can sort out the electricity at less than whatever they're willing to pay per month. Do you know what I mean? So we're not losing money and go about it that way so it's approved and the last final details can get dealt with and we don't, they don't have to wait till we meet again?
I would like to do that and you've put, you've said that very well, so you'll put that in the form of a motion, huh?
I would like to move that we approve the proposal, assuming that we get the hold harmless and the proof of insurance. And I am willing to include both locations for antenna, assuming that they can be done safely. As, we do have to sort out the electrical problem, assuming that we can solve the electrical problem at less cost to the city than Elwell is going to pay for the privilege of using the antennas. I think that we should approve.
Okay, got a motion.
I'm glad I don't have to type that up.
Is there a second? Okay, Christie Campbell has seconded. You know, this is a new thing. To my knowledge, we've never had to deal with anything like this in the city council at least. But they really saw it.
Can I give you a little clarification?
Do what, Randy?
Can someone repeat the motion again, just so I know exactly what we're voting on?
I will, unless it's written down.
Hang on just a second. I am, uh, working on some of this high-tech equipment we have here. And that being the tape.
I'm just unsure, I'm, I'm sure if we are voting on, on letting Mr. Elwell proceed, if we're voting on charging him the fee, is all of this together in one motion?
Yes.
Yes.
So that was my intent, but perhaps we should set the fee at the cost of the electric solution plus thirty dollars or some dollar amount that is selected so that you don't have to go through any more trouble to get that approved.
I'm, I'm fine with that too, as again, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm really viewing this as a public service. But the people that are gonna use it, some of them are gonna be outside the city limits. So the folks inside shouldn't have to foot the bill for that. So I'm looking for some type of, as you said, just a stipend or whatever. They paid the electric bill and some, some, so many dollars a month.
Right.
The original proposal said a hundred dollars a month or.
It did.
Paying the stuff inside, yeah. Excuse me, Mayor. Derek, Elwell and Dylan said if there's any questions for them that they're willing to answer them.
Okay. We have Derek and Dylan on.
What did Thompson?
Uh, we have Derek and, uh, I'll get, come back to Tony. Uh, Derek and Dylan on there and said if we have any questions, they're willing to answer them. Tony said the original proposal was that they agreed to pay a hundred dollars a month. So.
Okay.
I'm certainly fine with that. And they'll be responsible for the electric bill. For, for their equipment, nothing else.
Right, we won't use it for anything, but it's not on and to turn electrical on, there's usually a fee.
Yeah, there'll be a deposit probably. We'll work that out too. Maybe we've got so much, I signed a check for so many electric bills here in the city, but maybe they'll cut it on for nothing. We've got, you know, between water and sewer in general, we probably have fifteen different electric hookups.
I'd like to ask the question about the antennas. It's gonna be put on our tower.
It is.
And how far does that go? Is it gonna have to have guy wires or, or anything to hold that antenna up there?
No. As I understand, it's very small. Is that something you can ask them, Grant? Okay. The question Hal has is how big is the antenna attachment to go on our? So we're hoping to get an answer from Derek and Dylan here in a minute.
If it is big enough to have guy wires, where are we gonna attach it?
Oh, we can't do that.
We, you know, you gotta go to the building since we gotta get an admission and all that.
We can't put it on the roof either because we don't know what kind of shape that's in.
Right.
Okay. Hopefully we'll have an answer here in a minute. We'll pause for the calls for just a minute. But do have a motion. You okay with a hundred dollars a month on your motion?
Yep. Plus the electric.
Plus the electric, yeah.
That's gonna be a hundred dollars per location?
We didn't talk about that because this, this new location just came in to my office today.
Should we vote on that separately?
No, I think we can do it all in one motion, but I, I'd really like to get an answer. Hal's raised an issue that's very, very relevant and I think I know the answer, but. Okay, what's his say?
He said ideally as high as possible. I haven't been on top of what kind, I've been, I guess, in to say what the hell we're yet. So it would be difficult to give an accurate response to that topic. So they're not sure if this kind of tall antenna would be due to not, due to not being able to see the location.
Hal, Hal has asked a question about the attachment that's going on our tower. And he asked whether or not there'd have to be guy wires or attached to the roof or anything like that. That roof is probably not in tip-top shape. And the answer we got back was they're not sure how much, how tall that will be. Uh, until they can get up there and, and see, I guess, see how it fits in with their network.
Dylan also asked if, is there a railing on the tower? Would we be able to attach to ready to set railing?
I don't know the answer to that. They asked, is there a railing on the tower? Is that what the question was?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know the answer to that. You know, Tony, you've been.
I do not, I look at it on the map, or. This will be straight down.
Okay.
And on guy wire, generally guy wire on the uprights, they're not on the antennas, they're actually on the tower.
Okay.
If the tower didn't have guy wire on it, there wouldn't need to be any.
Okay. Tony says that the guy wires are actually on the tower, they're not running out from it, they're on the tower, so.
I mean, if the tower doesn't need guy wire, the antenna would be effective.
Okay, if the tower doesn't need guy wire, well, you heard, I'm saying for Katie. If the tower doesn't need guy wires, guy wires, the attachment would end up. Okay. Did anyone get a second to the motion?
I did for the first, yeah. We ain't changing anything.
Okay, Christie's seconded, we're not changing anything. Any other questions?
I do with this.
Thank you.
If we've got a, if there's an amateur uh, antenna on our water tank, who did?
Well.
Are we getting anything from it?
I don't know the answer to that and the information I have came in the email from, from Derek and Dylan. So it could be that it's something to do with our emergency services, I don't know.
The thing I would think it would be there, they used to use an old low band to communicate, uh, show it in village.
And it may not even be operational.
Right.
That's something we gotta look into. The question is about the, what I said was the amateur thing, uh, on the water tower.
Water tower.
And Tony speculated it could have been a low-band frequency that we used years ago for the city employees to communicate. So we don't even know if.
It's been a while.
Yeah, we don't even know if it's.
About that amateur being, based off what I would define, that amateur antenna is operated by the club in Wilson County. So I don't know if it's their antenna or a low band, but.
Okay, what the folks are telling Grant is that the amateur antenna is being operated by the ham operators club in Wilson County. So I think Tony's raised a good question, we got some questions to ask about that.
And Derek just said additionally, it would be a non-penetrating antenna.
It's, the one that they wanna do is a non-penetrating tower.
Good. So I think Howell raised a question. I'm not really sure if it was Howell, but I think Howell raised, maybe it was Tony. Is there a hundred supposed to, when they proposed a hundred dollars, it was just for the antenna on the city hall?
Yeah.
City hall. Is there a fee for the water tower antenna?
Well, we've not talked about that. So maybe the thing to do is go ahead and approve everything with the city hall and leave the other open till we know more about the water tank. That's a possibility.
That's fair.
Is that something we live with?
I think that's what we need to do because that's what they're waiting on, I think, the city hall.
Okay. Alright, then let's treat our motion as Katie has made it and seconded by Christie that it has to deal with the city hall, what they will pay there, what they will use it for, and the tower. And, uh, so is there further discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Alright, uh, let me, just two or three more items that I think won't take that long. Uh, I sent you out an email about a mediation I was involved in a week ago on the fish kill. If you'll recall, we had received a notice of violation from the state. We had a fish killed in the creek July eighteen of two thousand eighteen. And we were, uh, hit with the cost of the fish, as they refer to them. Uh, yeah. The, uh, the manpower it took to count the fish, the dead fish. And then the thing that, that concerned me was is they hung us with a potential penalty of if we had any more notices of violation within a year. Excuse me. We could potentially have to pay more money and it was something like five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. It was an odd number. I thought that was unfair for the state to be hitting with, us with that at the same time that we're trying to get this sewer project going and, and as I told the mediator, we're gonna kill that line in the creek. It's not gonna be any problem in the future. So what I asked in the mediation was make your future notices of violation, if you're gonna hold us responsible for them, for one year after our sewer project is complete. And they went along with it. State said that's fine. So I thought that was fair because if the people that build the sewer line do what they're supposed to, we shouldn't have any notices of violation. The other thing, they wanted us to pay thirty-eight hundred and some odd dollars for that and I got them to reduce it to thirty-two hundred dollars. So I'm waiting on that order to come in. I feel like we did the right thing, but, but it would have gone to trial if it hadn't been mediated. I never did feel like it'd get to trial because there wasn't that much to argue about. And I felt like the state was very reasonable with us. So I just wanted to report on that, doesn't require any action. I do have something else to deal with the tank and it came in today. And it is the guys that do our operator, Jay, uh, the, the, we have a group of three men that do our certified water operators. We have to do a tank inspection and that's required every so often. He got two bids. One from Complete Restoration in Henderson, Kentucky of seventeen hundred dollars. And one from S E Diving Services from Greenville, South Carolina of fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. Their recommendation to us is the low bid and they have used the low bid before. And they've had no issues with them. And they can complete any rehab that they may find in the tank after they do the inspection. Keep in mind, this is the inspection, this is not fixing anything they find. And y'all know that tank's been there for a while. So I'm gonna recommend to you tonight that we accept the low bid from Complete Restoration LLC and authorize them to do the work.
Are they both? I'm trying to take a look at these real quick. So I see that S E Diving Services is providing video? So that it can be, is that also from Complete Restoration? I mean, I think what you said was they've used them before and then satisfied. Yes.
I did say that. What they say is visual inspection of the tank interior using, utilizing our remotely operated submersible vehicle. Visual inspection of the tank exterior, u- utilizing our trained staff. So they'll have a.
So it doesn't.
Cameran, I guess. A camera.
It doesn't say that it's gonna be videoed?
It does not say that in those words, no. And whereas the low bid does, the low bidder does. So I think we've got to.
Wait. Who's the low bidder?
The low bidder is S E Diving Services that's gonna do the video.
Got it. I thought you were saying it was the other one that we were going.
No, no, no.
And I'm flipping back and forth to try to compare.
No, I, I think you gotta go with the low bidder unless there's some glaring.
Move to approve.
Yeah. Alright, got a motion?
I moved to approve.
Motion to approve S E Diving Services LLC.
S E Diving Services.
Low bidder meets specs. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay.
I have one question.
Sure.
How, how often do we do these?
I wish Randy Gwaltney was available to tell us, but I think it's either every three years or every five years. But when I.
I just didn't remember.
Well, and I don't remember either, Katie, it's an educated guess and maybe not too well-educated. But I went to that meeting in December with the water folks of TDEC. And this is one of the things they told us that we needed to get done this year. So we're gonna make.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion? Did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. Only other thing I had on new business was just our monthly budget report. Certainly nothing alarming there after one month. You know, there's a lot of line items, we haven't even spent any money on them, but uh, always the charter said I'm the reporter to you and I just, I don't see anything there remarkable that we need to, to deal with. I will tell you that our next meeting will be September fifteenth at six o'clock. And now I'm ready to go around the table and we'll start with that table in Plague County with Randy. Are you still there, Randy?
Yeah, I'm good, I got nothing.
Okay. Other than a victory, that's all we needed tonight. Okay, Hal?
I'm referring back to this paving out of, on our Tennessee Boulevard. When we get that zone, you know, the county paved our streets.
Mm-hmm.
And we appreciate that very much because we got a good deal, I realize that. But the top, the pavement that they put down is real coarse. And hit, water went through it and that's why our streets is shredded up and was. When they paved it, I'd like to make sure that they put the top coat on. It's smoother and it's, uh, and it won't, and the water ran off instead of going through. Cause I think it's one of the biggest things wrong with our streets. I know we've dug a lump quite a bit, but, uh, the water and the, and freezing and whatever is, is sort of broke them up.
I'm gonna, I may ask Steve Murphy, you know Steve. I may ask him to call you so y'all can communicate about what you're talking about.
Okay.
I, I, I think I'll ask him if he'll do that.
But you know, the main highway, it's like interstate, what?
Yeah.
It's real slick and smooth.
Yeah.
It's not grainy like our streets.
Yeah. Now, keep in mind, what we put down was twenty-four years ago, so they've probably got a better, better product now, but. Katie, the.
I heard it.
Okay, you heard it.
I got it.
Good, Randy, do you get it? You hear? Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, did you hear what, what Hal's concern was about when we do our paving to make sure we get a smooth top coat?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Lee?
I was prepared to ask that our police do a little more patrolling in town. So it'd be visible on our surface street. But after I had this discussion and a roundtable to say it seems to have picked up now however, anyway, the patrolling wise.
Okay. Okay.
I couldn't hear that.
Uh, was, he was prepared to talk about the police doing some more patrolling in town. And he says since they've had some discussions that, that it seems to have picked up, so.
Good.
Yep. Alright, where are you, Katie?
So we covered everything on my list except the two car show problem. Because I think Vicki had a car show planned for the fifth with the train and the festival, quote unquote. And that you said the June car show was trying to reschedule to that date. Did that get sorted out?
I haven't had any discussions with anybody about those car shows. I know the contact that I had dealt with when we, uh, disallowed a car show back in April, a gentleman by. April, a gentleman by the name of Barney O'Gwynn, and they have been advertising that they're gonna be here on September the fifth around the fire hall while the, uh, fish fry is going on. And Chief Hahn had said earlier, a couple of months ago, he was okay with that. So as far as I know, that's still on. Now, do y'all want to cancel that?
I just, last time I brought up, when they were trying to choose whether to reschedule to that, I brought up that I thought there was another car show. But if they're not planning to use the same property, I don't guess it matters. I mean, I still have my concern about events in town during this, and I'm sure you'd be happy to stipulate to that, but.
I don't know about the other car show, I'm not having any discussions about, of course, I think that's gone through Vicky Fraser, I believe, and, uh, uh, Mr. O'Gwynn is, and all we've done is communicate by, by message, we've not actually talked in person that I recall. But they, they chose this date and they're supposed to be over here. I did make sure that the saddle club would not be here, uh, and they are having the state saddle club show at the ad center, they always have it on Labor Day weekend. So that won't be a conflict, because I knew that would be too much in here, uh, if they were having the saddle club, so.
Well, I just remembered that we had approved the car show through Vicky.
We do have to, right now, to my knowledge, we do.
No, we already did, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I mean, right now, I think we've got two char, two car shows on September fifth. One over in town somewhere, and one here behind us.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Christie?
I'm good this time.
Okay, Christie says nothing. That might be good, because my pen is running out of ink. Um, okay, Grant, you got anything over there, anybody asking anything? Okay, well, I'm at that point, uh, thank everybody for participation and attendance. Uh, Randy, appreciate you joining in from parts unknown, and, uh, Katie joining in remotely, and everybody else getting here, we appreciate that. And I'm ready for a motion to adjourn, if y'all are ready to.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, if you're for it, get up and go home.